Good morning. This is a study session of the Yakima City Council. Today's study session is regarding the city of Yakima's responsibility for ADA regulations. We've got a full agenda of presenters this morning, and we'll move through that and ask questions as questions are needed. Before we start that agenda, I'd like to acknowledge Mike Hunnell, who has really worked very hard on behalf of the community to bring this to the forefront and to make sure that folks with disabilities have access to all the things that all the rest of us have access to. So, Mike, way to work hard on this particular cause, a very, very worthy cause. Again, I want to thank you for that. We will give you an opportunity to speak to us after we have worked through the presenters who are here today to present. And I see, sitting at the table today, Doug Maples, our Code Administration and Planning Manager. So, Doug, I'm going to let you begin, and as Jeff Cutter comes, we'll go back, okay?
Okay. Thank you much, very much.
Oh, I apologize. We're responsible to do a roll call here, so I'm sorry about that, Debbie.
Father.
Here.
Calling. Eric.
Here.
Here.
Really here.
Here.
Okay. Apologize for that, Doug. Go ahead.
No problem. Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be able to present this item before the council, because this is a very important issue that we all face each day. The intent of the provisions that I am responsible for within the city of Yakima are private property and structures. So, that gets into the parking lots within those private properties and the structures that are built on those private properties. The intent of the building code is to provide standards and specifications for making buildings and facilities accessible to and usable by the physically disabled persons. And that's really a quote right out of the RCW state law. Unlike many jurisdictions in the United States and many states in the United States, Washington State has taken proactive stance on ADA. Even before the federal government passed ADA regulations, Washington State was a forerunner. In 1976, they had regulations for ADA. Barrier-free is what it was called back then. Still is today within Washington State. However, there is a provision within Washington State law that provides the ability for elected officials in each jurisdiction to modify the codes, make them more restrictive, except certain codes within Washington State. And the barrier-free regulations are one of those. And the cities and counties are expressly prohibited, in fact, within our RCWs to amend those codes. And at this point, since Mr. Cutter has arrived, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Cutter to share the legal responsibilities within the powers of the city of Yakima.
Thank you, Mr. Maples. Honorable mayor, council members, I apologize for being moments late. As I understand it, my role here is to advise you with respect to not whether or not there are two or three or 200 violations of access requirements within the city, but rather to advise you with respect to what the law is, what the city has to comply with, and then based on other discussion from the various departments for you to decide based on that information, just whether or not the city is in compliance with the requirements for access. As Mr. Maples was just advising you, there are specific requirements provided by statute within the state of Washington, and they're different, whether you're talking about building and construction, or you're talking about streets and sidewalks, public rights of way. There are different provisions. They're based on different laws. You've heard through the course of the last few months evidence that there may be non-compliance problems with respect to what the current provisions of the law are. I suspect that there probably are. And based on the law and the way that our city has to comply with it, there's some reasons for that. In Washington, building and construction compliance with access is based on statute, which is based on building code, provides through building code adoption the rules that the city has to comply with when approving projects, when deciding whether or not projects that are subject to approval are within the scope of the requirements of the laws that now exist. I prepared a fairly concise, I hope, well, in attorney terms, it's concise memorandum of what the law requirement in Washington is. It is concise. The law with respect to access is voluminous, and all I can do here is provide you a guideline as to why we do what we do, and then for you to decide based on that whether we're doing it right. The law is, as far as access, the law in Washington is reliant on two separate sections of RCW, the first being the building code. In Washington, recently, the International Building Code was adopted to replace the Uniform Building Code, which had been in place for quite a long time. With it, with the IBC adoption, came some new, updated, I should say, requirements for access, which in fact mirror for many, in most respects, the ADA requirements. Now, the ADA is an interesting creature. You hear it referenced all the time. In most part, what we're talking about when we talk about the ADA is constitutional access right, its application of the right to access as determined by the federal government. With respect to Washington Building Code, we're talking about statutes that say, this is how it shall be done, based on, in this case, the IBC, which was adopted a couple of years ago. Now, the IBC is not the end of the story. The building code is not the end of the story. In Washington, before there was any access requirement mandated by the federal government against states, the state of Washington elected to adopt an access statute quite a long time before, and that's codified in Chapter 7092 of the RCW. It used to be that that was the entire parameter of the access requirements, basically the Washington State ADA. That has been eroded and eroded and eroded, and if you look in the statute, you'll see that most of it has been repealed, the reason being we have adopted more and more the International, well, the building code through the Uniform Building Code, now the IBC, and what it brings with it with respect to compliance with ADA access. I'm going to refer to access requirements, because that's what our codes refer to. They don't anywhere, unless you go deep into the IBC itself, which is referenced by the code, by the statute, reference ADA. They're talking about elderly and aged access requirements, handicap access requirements. So, that's how I'm going to try and remember to talk about it. Not only do we have the IBC and the building codes, but we also have Chapter 7092. And there is enough of 7092 left that when the city is deciding whether or not we have to require certain compliance, certain determinations have to be made. New construction obviously has to meet whatever the new codes are, and those codes are updated, and so those regulations or requirements change. As time changes, so do the requirements. They've become much more rigid, much broader in some respects over the years. So, new construction is going to follow whatever the track of the changes in the code requirements are. That's fairly simple to understand. Another provision that 7092 provides is with respect to amendments to buildings. Substantial remodeling, substantial rehabilitation of a building can bring into effect the new codes, which means that if somebody makes a substantial revision, brings prints to the city requesting approval of a substantial revision, the code department is going to tell them that they've got to bring that building, in most cases, up to compliance with ADA requirements. Now, the bill here later, there's some other conditions to that as well, but principally a substantial rehabilitation or remodel brings into effect whatever the present code requires for access. What's a substantial revision? Well, if you look to the ADA requirements or some other state requirements, they're much different than they are in Washington, and that is because of this Chapter 7092, which controls access, which was certified by the federal government years ago, and actually before, there was a structured across the country requirement for access. And what it defines, and it has not been changed, and in fact, as Mr. Maples was saying when I came in, it cannot be changed. It is specifically stated in the statutes that in the building code, that the provisions of 7092 requiring and providing for access may not be amended by the city, by a county. That's the law, and that's the way it's going to stay until our higher-ups decide to change it, which probably would affect the certification and is probably why it can't be changed, because we were certified by the federal government with these provisions. That's what they want to see. If we mess with it, we're going to put ourselves out of the course we've been in for a number of years. Okay, so it can't be changed, and what it provides is, in definition, is that essentially unless the 60% of the value of the structure being remodeled is being affected, in other words, the remodel cost is at least 60% of the value of the entire building, it's not considered a substantial remodel, and therefore it does not require the city to require full ADA compliance with modern requirements. And that is one of the reasons why you'll see many structures in this city and in this state that while they've had a facelift, they have not been made or forced or required, however you want to look at it, to comply at 100% level with the newest ADA requirements. And there's reasonable basis for that, when you think about it. The regulations change all the time, and if any building owner, business owner, was required to update continuously whenever the code changed, that they'd be in a constant state of reconstruction. So, that's the reasoning for the provisions that exist at this point, and that's essentially the application. So, the long and the short, on page three in the middle, if you're looking at the memorandum, is kind of laid out on how this really works in practical terms. Regulation of construction is through the IBC. The IBC has adopted, in most respects, the requirements of ADA accessibility. To determine whether or not a building is in compliance, we can go to any one of the sites that have been brought to the attention of council as being noncompliant. For the most part, those have involved private parking lots. The discussion that we've had here now, there are some issues raised with respect to some public properties as well, but for the most part, it's parking lots associated with structures that has been the biggest cause for concern. Excuse me. To analyze a specific site for accessibility, you've got to decide when the property was constructed. Was it before 1976, when any of the accessibility requirements became effective in Washington? If so, there may not be any provisions for accessibility, and then you must look at whether or not the building was substantially remodeled since that time. If it has been, then it should be compliant with whatever the regulations for access were at that time. If it hasn't been, it won't have changed, and there's nothing the city can do to make it change.
Hey, Jeff, I've got a question on, you mentioned the 60% remodel figure, and that that's the threshold that you would have to theoretically comply with the ADA thing. And then the next paragraph over here says, except when, if the building department, I'm assuming that's Doug, feels that it's
Impracticable.
Practical or can't be done, and then they would waive the compliance. They could do it partially or waive the whole thing completely. So, that's a decision in the building department, then. Is that a written waive here that the building owner has that he could explain to someone if he is, you know, if someone says, hey, you're not in compliance, and you remodeled your building and stuff? Does he have something in writing to show that, that he has that waived?
It's usually noted on the plans, the construction plans, that there are
Before it's even finished, before it's even
Before they even start.
Okay.
In our plan review, we will discuss the feasibility. For instance, if a beam, a major support beam in a column are in the way of making a doorway too wide enough, or stair width wide enough, it would be technically infeasible to require that, and we would note that on the plans.
And then if your decision, let's say the building owner, let's say you're saying, no, you have to do that, and then this building owner is trying to, do they appeal that to some other thing or something, or?
Yeah, the city has a Board of Appeals that's found in the building code, plumbing code, and all the rest of the codes, and they can appeal to that Board of Appeals.
I want to mention one other avenue of appeal. In the event that that decision is still contested, and it has been on occasion by the builder, owner, and his or her lawyers that come into play, which happens.
Really?
Yes, it does. What we have then done is to seek an outside independent from the International Conference of Building Officials. They have a battery of lawyers, of people who interpret the codes, and who then give us advice that we have typically followed, and it's almost uncontestable, because it's based on their overall knowledge and expertise in case law that deals with these kinds of matters.
I'd like to ask on that also, and mentions that there's also 20% cost involved under D on part of your presentation, Doug. 70D says, "The International Building Code, Section 3409.6. All stations affecting an area containing a primary function exception, the cost of providing the accessible route are not required to exceed 20% of the cost of the alteration affecting the area of primary function." Would that be in addition to the 60%? I mean, I'm just thinking if somebody's at 50%, and then he comes in and says, well, you've got to be, you know, but, does that include the 60%? Is that below the 60% threshold?
Well, there's two numbers that have been mentioned. Jeff mentioned the 60%. What the 60% is, is actually if your building is valued at hypothetically a million dollars by the county assessment, and you're only going to do, you're going to do less than $600,000 in alterations, then you would not have to apply, or the regulations would not apply. Or, we could use this exception in the IBC of 20% of the value of the construction. So, it can be one or the other, and it's really the choice of the applicant and not the choice of the building department, which one they choose. This particular provision of 20% is a new item. It actually is found in Title III of the federal law. It's always been that the 60% was the only thing that could stay recognized.
And now the state does recognize this 20% because it's part of the International Business Code, or are we still, isn't it federal?
We're really talking about two different things. The 60% with the state law is a determination of when the state, the city, any entity in this state is allowed to require update or changes with respect to access requirements. The 20% is really talking about how far those improvements can be required to go. So, they're two different things.
Okay, thank you.
I was, I'm not sure where I left off in that little scenario.
Page three, somewhere in the middle.
Yeah, we were kind of going through. When you look at a property, how do you decide whether or not it's in compliance and whether or not somebody did something wrong if it isn't in compliance? And it's, I guess the point of that paragraph, which starts in summary, is that you can't just look at a property and say, that's not in compliance. You, the city, or you, the county, or wherever that property is, are doing something wrong here. You have to analyze this from the very beginning, going forward. Where's that property been? What was it required to do when it was developed into a parking lot associated with this building? What was required then? Has there been sufficient amendments since then to require that it be updated to a newer code? And if it has been updated, when was it updated, and what was the code at that time, because that's what it had to comply with, and so forth? It's not at all the simple process of looking at a parking lot and saying, this is what's supposed to be there. That's correct. That is probably what's supposed to be there under the code as it now exists. However, that is not the code that we are allowed to apply to that property unless there have been measures taken by the property owner to require him to update and modernize the access requirements. So, it's not, unfortunately, in some respects, it's not a simple look and see if the signs in the painting is there, or the doors are wide enough. It goes deeper than that. That's what the building department has to do when they look at plans requesting revision. They have to make all of those determinations based on the size of the project. And as you can imagine, being business people yourselves, you think about it, you're a building owner, you understand the requirements that you're going to be faced with, or you become aware of them very quickly when you submit your plans for revision, and you find out that at the scope of your project, as you first present it, you're going to be required to basically redo the building. What are you going to do? You're going to just forge ahead sometimes if it's necessary to accomplish your goal. Sometimes you're going to back those plans up, and the requirement is 60% within one year. So, they kind of try to avoid somebody going in with eight small projects in a year to avoid the rules. But on the other hand, if that person can accomplish their goal with less than 60% within that year, they may consider doing that to avoid a significant expense of updating to meet the accessibility requirements. And that's okay within the law that we have in Washington. They can do that.
Could I ask, Jeff, I'm apologizing. I guess I tracked the parking as separate from the building requirements, but you're saying that they're in lockstep, no update of parking standards, even though parking standards could well be very much less expensive to implement than a 60%. But a building is exempt from even parking standards if it doesn't do a remodel of the structure itself.
If that parking lot is associated with that building, like you've got your Safeway and your Safeway parking lot, and yes, that's right, and in fact, the code specifically ties, for example, City Hall does a complete remodel through the main corridor of the building, doesn't even look at the parking lot, just makes better accessibility inside. If the purpose or the result of that work results in resolving a number of accessibility issues, and if the financial parameters are met, then we will be required to go outside and make the parking lot. What they're trying to do is make it a path. See, if you have a parking lot you can't get out of your car in, but you do all these nice things inside, it doesn't make much sense, and that's why they try to make it a project that sweeps through the entire course of access. They also limit that so that somebody who starts on a fairly simple project doesn't end up completely revamping half a city block. So, that's the reason for these percentages and the steps that have to be met.
Thank you. I'd like to just ask again, this might be repetitious, but part of the reason that we're here is that Mike has been bringing us updated, basically, assessments of different properties, and just as one of his examples, the Gateway Center over here, he brought some, he did an inventory and felt like they had some parking spaces that were out of place. Can you in a minute walk me through the process that the Gateway folks went through to either meet code or not meet code?
Well, the, any building, whether it be the Gateway or, as Jeff indicated, the City Hall, when there's modifications that are making that building interior, the accessibility is going to be, remain interior. But when you have the parking lot and you have required, not the provided parking number of spaces, but the required spaces, that's what triggers the number of spaces for accessibility. For instance, in 1976, the required spaces was one in 50. Today, it's one in 25. And so, if that building had not had any alterations from the time it was built, and it complied with it at the time it was built, then those spaces are adequate until such time is that additional parking is triggered, and then you'd have to put additional ADA parking in. So, that's the component that you have to fall within.
Okay, now, I don't feel like you're answering my specific, because the Gateway Center is not 1976. It's beyond that, so, you know, the process for Gateway Center, it's new construction, there's been no renovation. Tell me, tell me your recollection or why Mike thinks that there isn't enough handicap parking in, why it's still there.
Because many times, the parking lots that have been identified in the city are based off the number of parking spaces that you find in that lot and not the amount of spaces that were required for that. Because, for instance, if you take a look at what was at Montgomery Wards, they probably had two times the amount of parking spaces that were required. had two times the amount of parking spaces that were required. So, if they have a thousand parking spaces and they're only required 400, we're going to base our number off that 400 and not the thousand spaces. So, it may appear that we don't have enough parking spaces for the disabled.
So, you're saying that, again, at Gateway Center, it just appears we don't, under the RCWs and the IBCs and everything, they are current?
Well, I haven't gone down and physically investigated whether they are or not. I mean, Mr. Hunnels provided an extensive number of properties within the city of Yakima, and as Jeff has indicated, we'd have to research out the project when it was built, look at the codes, look at what was provided, and then physically go down and see if any modifications have been done that would trigger any additional spaces. I mean, it'd be a really extensive research process for one building. And in the last survey that's included in this packet, it's 10 pages of different properties. And, you know, it's hard to say whether they are in compliance or not.
How much follow-through does your department do, either, well, I think you've answered that portion with it, under new construction? How closely do you follow to see if these places are in compliance?
At the time we issue the final inspection and the certificate of occupancy, on that moment in time, that building is in compliance with our regulations. We do not issue a certificate of occupancy unless all of the codes have been met for that particular building.
And that would be based upon whatever RCW they would be under at the time of construction?
That's correct.
And then how much follow-up then is done, if any, after, after construction?
We, since I've been here in the almost seven years, we've gotten one complaint form from an individual on the Long's Drug parking lot. We've gone up and dealt with that particular provision, and researched it out, and made them come into compliance. Now, since then, I've been up there and I've seen that there's a sign, just last week, I was up there getting some prescriptions, and the sign has been removed. So, the idea is that not only do you have to stripe the parking lot, but you have to put the sign up as well. The sign's really critical, and you'll hear later why.
Well, you know, I noticed that particularly in the painting on parking spaces and that, and many areas of town are badly faded. In fact, sometimes you're not even sure. You know, I don't know that we have some type of an ongoing check for that sort of thing or not. It would seem to me like that one of the purposes I would like to see come out of this is not only compliance for new construction, but some type, I know Mike has did, as the mayor said, an extensive inventory of properties here in the community, both public and private, and that we go through and see if people are in compliance, or businesses, or parks, or whatever it may be. And if not, some way, either assist them through, through follow-up or correspondence or whatever it might be, to aid them in coming into compliance. I realize that we probably do have a few restrictions as far as private is concerned, but definitely as far as the public is concerned, that's our purview.
Right.
And I'd like to see us, you know, as a result of this.
The idea that the building department is ultimately responsible in, as far as ADA regulations, is incorrect. Because the Department of Justice is the ultimate authority over the accessibility provisions, as well as the owner of the property is held responsible by the Department of Justice to comply with the barrier-free regulations.
When you say the Department of Justice, I think of the Department of Justice as being out of Washington DC.
That's correct.
But who's the Department of Justice here, the police?
Well, they're-
I mean, I don't see that we can expect the Department of Justice from Washington DC to come to Yakima to see if we're in compliance with ADA regulations. Who does it here?
When it becomes an issue of a place that's art, like you brought up the example of a parking lot where the striping is fading, the city, in a private parking lot, the parking lot that belongs to Montgomery Wards, parking lot that belongs to Gateway, has very little authority to go in and tell people to repaint their parking lot. That's their parking lot. They have to comply with certain requirements, and certainly, I think in the public's eye, they want to do that. And that's really the biggest motivation for them to keep their lines painted and the organization of their parking lot. Now, as far as the federal oversight, that would be through somebody bringing an action under a federal provision against the owner.
It just seems to me like there must be an easier way.
Well, it's similar-
Bringing a federal action against somebody, I mean, I don't know, it just seems to me like we should be able to, just as a good neighbor thing, say to Montgomery Ward or whomever it might be, that, look, your parking spaces are faded out, you can't tell whether that's a handicap spot or not, could you come into compliance?
Certainly you'd do that.
Maybe we need to have some type of legislation here, and maybe we can't, I don't know, that's what you're here for, to tell us. But it seems to me like there's something we could be doing locally.
Well, there's a big difference, with respect to the good neighbor, hey, we'd really like to see your parking lot identifiable as being compliant is one thing. Legislating that you have to is different, and frankly, would be problematic as far as enforcing, telling somebody, that's, I mean, we can do that in some respects, it's still, in my opinion, problematic. The, well, graffiti paintout's one example, where property owners are required to cover or maybe held liable for not covering graffiti on their property. It's a very thin line when you're getting into somebody's constitutional rights as to how they deal with their own property. So, with respect to legislation that would require compliance with keeping lines to a certain brightness of paint, or however that would be indicated, would be, it would be a dicey issue.
Be a what?
A dicey issue. I would be concerned that the city might be going beyond its constitution, beyond the property owner's constitutional right.
So, what I hear you telling me is, and there's really nothing we can do about private property, all we can be concerned with is the public's property?
With respect to forcing private property to add spaces to accommodate new requirements, yes, there's very little we can do about that. As far as whether they keep their lines painted or not, I don't offhand know of any provision that would say we can go in and make them paint their parking lots, although it is in their best interest. And that certainly could be something that could be pointed out to them by any number of avenues to maintain the order in their parking lot. But one thing that can be done, that's going to be spoken to, is the signage in the parking lots where there are spaces provided and they're not signed. And that's something that not only can be required, but can be cited as a violation if it isn't, because that's something that's supposed to be there. If the space is provided for handicap, it needs to be signed that way.
Then do we need to enact some type of legislation at our level?
It's already enacted.
Or is there, so we need to be sure it's being enforced?
Enforcement.
And there again, that's the responsibility of.
That would be the responsibility of the agency's code and police.
Under the accessibility code, and I was just referencing while you were talking, I don't find any provision for maintenance after that final inspection. There is no provisions in our codes, and I don't think that there is in the RCWs for us to go back and require the person to address issues in the parking lot situation. And so, I don't have any authority beyond the time, we can make it known to them that they have obligations, but certainly, we don't have the authority to enforce it as I read the codes right now.
I'm going to take hold of this thing, it's a little bit of a dicey subject, but we've got time limits today and a whole roster of people to speak to us. Doug, thank you very much, I appreciate that. You've opened our eyes, and I hope opened your eyes, Mike, to the challenges we have as a community to enforce these type of laws. Jeff, do you have anything else that you think would be of benefit for us?
At this point, it probably would be most effective to just allow the different entities to speak to their issues, and I can just stand by.
Okay, next on the hill is Mike Merriman. If, I don't see Mike, is that you, Rod?
Do you have any of the coffee there, Mr. Lover? I'm not Mr. Lover, but I'd be happy to. He's been drinking the whole-
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
He's not shy. Uh-oh, we got the big guy.
Yeah.
Again, you've let it go.
Chief?
Good morning. Mayor and council members, some time ago, the police department embarked on a volunteer program for parking enforcement to include handicap parking enforcement. Since that time, the department, through the Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association, has recruited 12 volunteers, who have received limited commissions, are in the process still of receiving the training required for them to be able to enforce the state's parking laws. Can I let Captain Light, who's in charge of that division, give an explanation where we're at with it?
Morning. As the chief was talking about, he was referencing our CPAL program, and I spoke with Officer Ben Hiddle, who kind of has oversight of the program as early as this morning. And we're hoping by the first part of April, that we'll have the majority of these folks through the different levels of training and educations, and the ability how to write tickets, defensive driving, how to deal with potential hostile people in the community as they're issuing these infractions or citations. And by, like, by April, we're hoping that we'll get them out there, we'll start the process and get the program up and running. I think we're actually even waiting on some uniforms for them to arrive. When we kick this program off, we want to be 100% ready to go, and we don't want to start at, you know, only 75% complete. So, that's kind of where we're at right now with that.
Okay. Any questions?
Are they going to have some kind of markings on their cars so we can watch out for them?
Yes, they will, Ron.
You got a line extender there?
I noticed you looked at Mr. Lover when you said hostile citizens. What was that all about?
Did I read in your memorandum that there's going to be some educational aspect to this, to the citizens first, there'll be warnings prior to citation?
That's one of the things that, one of the things we were waiting on with our city legal, was in terms of how we were going to make notification, and what type of appropriate notifications we were going to make to private property owners before we kicked the program off. And we're still in discussions with them as to what would be appropriate to send out.
Is there such a thing as an infraction? Maybe I misunderstood, but is there such a thing as an infraction to the building owner if he's not signed properly?
Signage is, signage is a requirement.
So, signage is-
With ADA spaces that are properly, I mean, if the space is required in the parking lot, and it's there, otherwise provided, it is supposed to have the sign at a certain height, certain size, certain symbol, or that person, the person violating the space using it improperly can't be cited.
Okay, and I have a question on that, got back to this other question I had. On signage, it mentions in the RC, the IBC, that signs are required except total number of spaces is four or less. Are those total number of handicap accessible spaces or total number of parking spaces in the lot?
Yeah, I knew that, I don't know. I'd have to go back and look.
Mike says yes. Because I've got to follow up on that because I have a question on the ratio also.
Well, what's question?
If it says signage required, it says unless, the exceptions are, total number of spaces is four or less. Are those accessible spaces or are those parking spaces?
Those are only parking spaces.
So, so if you have four, or, and that was my other question, then, when it says the ratio is for every 25 parking spaces, you have to have one accessible. Well, how does this work if I only have, like in my building, even though it's in, you know, it's not, it's never been remodeled, but I have five parking spaces, kind of, I painted them like seven years ago. And I don't have a single handicap accessible parking space there, but then I also have five steps and a 32-inch wide stairway. But am I, am I in violation? Because I have five spaces, and it says it's between one and 25.
You need to tear your building down.
Tear my building down.
Don't worry, they can't cite you unless you don't have.
Well, but it says, if it says from one to 25, and I only have one parking space, then does that have to be handicap accessible? Then if I have four spaces, does it have to be handicap accessible? If I have 20 spaces, does it have to? Where's the break point?
The signage is required to be on every accessible space.
On every, okay.
Every accessible space has to be signed.
And if you have five spaces or more, you need, one of them needs to be a handicap parking space?
What is the fine for parking?
Up to 25.
Yes.
And then if my, but if my building is not accessible to handicap?
The first space has to be ban accessible. So, there's a difference within the space size.
Well, it says here, maybe I misconstrued this though, because it says for every six or fraction of six accessible parking spaces.
That's correct.
So, point, point five is a-
And that means that for every six, you have, you know, ban accessible or portion thereof. So, the very first one is a ban accessible space.
And ban accessible has wider requirements.
Well, there's two different dimensions. One's 132 inches for the space for the parking, and then the aisle is 60 inches, or it could be 96 and 96.
And so, if I have, so I say right now I have five spaces at my building, but if I made one of them ban accessible, I'd only have four.
You'd probably have three and a half.
Well, exactly, so I wouldn't have five spaces, so I wouldn't be required to have a accessible.
No, unfortunately.
And besides that, you can't get in my building anyway. Can't. Thank you, I was confused by all those.
What is the fine for parking in a handicap spot right now?
$250.
It's 250, it's a flat, I mean, there's not like up to 200, it's 250.
$250.
That should be a, once you guys start doing this, I'm certain that's going to be, we're going to see less people parking in hand, once people know that he actually will get a ticket, and will have to pay 250, that's going to really be a deterrent.
The other part of what Ron is saying though, and I think to carry that one step beyond, are these people who are using mothers' and grandmothers' parking thing and hanging it so they can have a good spot to park when they go to town.
You're just not going to know that.
Well, I'm just wondering though, if that's something, you know, that your group can be on the lookout for, Rod?
Well, it's something that, it is a problem. We know that it exists, if people abuse the handicap placards on a case-by-case basis. If we, they don't have the individual with them at the time they're using the space, they're probably in violation. Proving that's going to be difficult unless you know for a fact they're not in the building. But we'll look at that. The other thing is, we've already had a couple of complaints by people who, well, I just stopped in that parking space and I was just running inside to deliver something and run back out. There's- There's not gonna be any exception for that.
Should not be.
They're going to be putting out warnings at first. That's the education process, the violations they see. And then after a period of time that we feel sufficient amount of time and publicity and advertisement that we're gonna start enforcing this, then they'll start issuing the citations and then getting compliance.
Anything else for us gentlemen that would be of benefit?
One thing that, that Officer Light raised to me was that we were talking about the painting requirements and whether we can make people paint their lots. In fact, the, the painting is obsolete. It isn't even required. The signage is what's, what makes the space. So whether the lines are there or not, the requirement is that the sign would identify that parking and that's why the signage is really the issue, what we need to be looking at.
And they're not grandfathered in.
The spaces, the spaces are the issue. If the spaces are required, there's signage requirements that go with it.
For everybody, there's no-
The statute is very specific under 4661581 that it has to be a vertical sign with the international symbol of access on it. So it didn't-
Well, you can play patrol around all day long and enforce that. I mean, I'm not saying you should, because we got a lot of other things that-
Never been remodeled.
I mean, there's a lot of businesses that I've seen that don't have any sign up.
You're right.
And we, we're not in the prosecutor's department. We have brought this to the attention of certain businesses and they now have signs that they didn't have before. We do it as we, as identified as law enforcement will. And with this new program, it hopefully will pick up some speed and become more efficient.
Well, that might be something for codes to do is to write a friendly letter to businesses saying, hey, we wanna make you aware of this statute and, cause I told business owners, I said, hey, we're gonna talk about this stuff and after the study session, they're gonna be out looking for you. So you might as well go ahead and order the sign now and then get it installed because-
As Captain Light indicated, all of these things are coming into, they're happening right now. And the letter, in fact, that was prepared by Officer Hiddle is in my folder. There's a couple of things we've gotta change because we don't want it to be implied to business owners who have not had a, a parking space requirement believing that now they gotta go create one because this letter says you've gotta have one. That's, we can't do that as we've just discussed with respect to changes that require those spaces and don't. So we wanna make sure that they understand if they have spaces, those spaces need to be identified and how. And we're taking care of that right now.
And we're gonna clean up our own house as far as make sure all city-owned buildings and like Police Legal Center, all these places that we would have first are in compliance. And then, you know what, then just do what we can do with the rest of the, the properties out there.
Cause we wanna be sure we're in compliance, because that's the first thing that Joe Citizen will do is say, why aren't you in compliance?
I don't wanna make the paper.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it very much. Shelley, you are next on the agenda this morning.
Good morning. Shelley Will Smith with Street and Traffic Operations. We have three different areas that we work with the Americans with Disabilities Act. The first that we deal with is on-street parking as opposed to, you've been talking a lot about parking lot facilities. We get the requests for on-street parking, whether it comes from a private individual that's residing in a home or a business sometime will call and want to know about having on-street parking. With the on-street parking that is commercial or business, you also have to have a ramp facility and the width requirements for the parking stalls themselves. And so that becomes a little more difficult, like using Neil's example for his own business. If he wished to put a stall in front, even though he's not required to have one, he would also have to supply the pathway, the ramp to get from the stall to the sidewalk. An example of a business that wanted to have these stalls and did the work is, was Providence Hospital at that time, now it's Yakima Regional on Chestnut. They actually installed several on-street parking stalls, did the work to create the ramps that were required at that time. And as Jeff has said, these regulations change periodically, so the ramp slopes and things vary from year to year. On the residential basis, if we're dealing with an individual, it's in front of their home, they're using perhaps a driveway to access into their home, we're a little more lenient with those individuals. We do ask that they contact us and let us know if for some reason they no longer need the spaces and we do require that they actually meet the requirements for having an ADA space. And in some cases, the ADA, ADA space is not what is really necessary for the home. We may install a loading zone sign. They may have healthcare providers that are coming and picking them up and they just need to have a space that's close to their home so they can access maybe the medevan that's coming and taking them for treatments.
Talking about a public street in a residential area in the front of your house?
Right.
So you'd have to post a sign up there?
Right.
That would also be a $250 fine if somebody parked in that spot too.
Right.
And yet that on-street parking is not required? It's a request only?
Yeah, we deal with those on a request basis. And there is no requirements right now for on-street parking. There's some guidelines that are under review, but today we do not have on-street parking requirements for ADA spaces like you do in the lot, you know, the one for 25 or, you know, there's no requirements like that currently. The other issue that we deal with is on crosswalk widths and walking speeds and just accessible pedestrian facilities. And Bill Smithley's here today and Steffi Coleman, who works for the Washington State Department of Services for the Blind, is here also today. And we have worked with these individuals and other sight impaired people when we were working on the downtown Yakima project, when the audible signals went in. And so whenever we deal with signals, there are requirements that are for a broad range of people that may fall into the Americans with Disabilities Act. And so there's standards that we follow to make access to the facilities available to people, whether they're sight impaired or they're in a wheelchair or they're dealing with some other challenge. And so some of those are the, you know, the push button height itself, that the stand, the buttons are standard and they're in a standard location. And then also the walking or the crossing speed that we use for crossing intersections at those signalized intersection. The third area that we talked about, and I've been in front of council before on, is the sidewalk curb ramps. And we did an inventory and as I've shared before, we have, today's standard is different than the ramps that were put in in earlier years, but today we have 85 ramps that meet the standards that if you were to build under new construction are the slope requirements and the width. We do get complaints about the 1,000 and, we have 1,112 of them that are older ramps and we will get calls on those people requesting that they be updated to the new ramps because some of those are narrower or their, their slopes are, are steeper and people have difficulty using them. But they met the requirements at the time that they were installed. We did do a grant application this past year. Unfortunately, we did not receive any funds. There were 84 applications for $24 million of projects across the state of Washington. They funded the top 17 projects and we fell in the bottom 10. So, you know, we will keep looking for grants that, you know, we can try and apply for, for ADA ramps. The council also approved in their 2006 budget that the new gas tax fund starting in 2007, there's a fund set aside to do ramp repairs or new ramp installation.
Let me ask you a question of you, Jeff. Mike began this investigation of his because of a ramp width on Third Avenue. By law, what is the city of Yakima required to do? Do we have to update those or?
Essentially, what we're required to do is what Shelley's department has been doing. We are required, and, and in this case, we didn't talk about this in the first presentation, this case is controlled by the ADA. This is the other issue, the other side of the coin. And the ADA has, the government through the ADA has required measures be taken by local and county governments to reach compliance. They understand that this is a huge task, that it's a very expensive task, but what we are required to do is, is essentially what's been done, which is begin a program, identify the problem, in other words, the inventory, take steps toward addressing the problem, most critical areas first, working down the line, which is, is what the city's doing right now when new construction is done. It's, it's required that the intersection, whatever's affected, whatever touches the project, be updated to modern code and that, that's what the city is in the process of doing. The, the ADA requirements also take into account the fact that city governments and local governments and all governments are stretched for dollars and they, they account for that in providing that what is necessary must be done to the extent it's possible to do it. And that's, we're hoping for some grant money and get it, but we'll keep working at it.
Great, thank you. Any more questions?
Shelley, Shelley, how many sidewalk intersections or intersections do we have with sidewalks, without ADA?
Without ramps at all, we have 1,002.
1,002, with sidewalks and with ramps?
With sidewalks and no ramps is 1,002.
And if you throw in the no sidewalks, which really are-
I think there was on the transit routes, and remember this was, this inventory does not cover every intersection in town yet. We were focused on the transit routes because like Jeff said, you're supposed to prioritize how you do this and we haven't completed the entire inventory yet. But I think on the transit routes themselves, we had 620-some intersections that did not have sidewalks and therefore did not have ramps. So that's in addition to the 1,002. And, you know, I wanna clarify that the state or the federal government would view me as a maintenance operation. The things that I do fall under that maintenance category. I don't deal in the range of capital projects. And I believe that Al Rose is here this morning to talk to you about how, when the city starts a capital project, how those regulations come into play for doing the ramps. But typically when I'm doing chip seals and things like that, I'm below that cutoff.
Okay. Bill, you have a question?
Shelley, is there anyone in your department or any place in your department where businessmen can buy these signs?
No, we refer them to some of the people that are, you know, private companies here in town. We don't sell signs to any private company. You know, there are private businesses and that's their living and so we refer them.
Any other questions for Shelley?
What about for businesses that can't afford to buy a sign or? We wouldn't be the government without something like-
All right, next on the agenda is, according to my plan here is Bob.
Council members, I'm Al Rose with the City Engineering Division. I had short notice yesterday that I was gonna have to be here, so bear with me. Bob is out of the office for the day and probably the rest of the week for APWA. I believe, at least I've been led to believe that you have a copy of a memo from former city engineer Kay Adams addressing the issue of ADA. I would simply refer to that and then add to it that we have recently, within the last year and a half, revisited some of our requirements as far as design details regarding projects that we do. All of our projects, public and private, that we come in contact with are required to put in ADA ramps at all intersections that they're involved with. So if we have new projects in the public sector, such as a Nob Hill Boulevard or Washington Avenue or something of that nature, we are required and we do require ADA ramps. And the ramps that we have are modeled after the state ramps, which are brought into compliance with ADA. We have simplified ours simply because when we have a project, contractors have difficulty with the geometry, especially if you look at the state details. They will have a table on there as to dimension based upon radius and all of that sort of thing. So we've, we've modeled ours after theirs, but made them a little bit simpler and more understandable for the contractor's purposes. We've also done that on the basis of the fact that private contractors, when they are doing private developments, are also required to put these things in and they don't always have the expertise to be able to determine what they're supposed to do. And we have inspectors out there that will help take care of that. So we have updated our ADA ramps. We do require them on the part of the private development and we also require our own projects have those kinds of things put in.
Great. Any questions? Thank you. Gary?
Yes, good morning, Gary Pure. I'm the Transit Project Planner. I guess I could start by saying that ADA requirements is a key component of our daily operation that occur. In fact, we operate our system through the Dial-A-Ride Service 363 days a year. For some reason or other, one would think that Christmas and Thanksgiving would be the two days that we're given some, a holiday off, but it's actually Memorial Day and Labor Day that we don't function with the service. It does constitute about 20% of our operating budget and based on last year's $5.5 million total that was submitted, that actually factors out to just over a million dollars. In addition to the Dial-A-Ride Service, which again provides about 80,000 trips a year, we also maintain a certification process for those individuals that would be eligible to use the service. And that certification requires a, a formalized application with a doctor's approval to meet these standards. And that database alone has about 25 to 3,000 individuals in there. That periodically has to be maintained because obviously people do pass away and other people move on and then new people come onboard. So that's pretty much our Dial-A-Ride program, which again is our main focus. But in addition to that, since 2002, we became even more proactive in providing and meeting the ADA requirements. And our submission to you this morning, we have about oh, a dozen and a half of different areas that we've been looking at and focusing on as we continue to improve the accessibility and meeting the requirements of ADA. Some of those include things like just doing nothing more than making stop announcements. Individuals that are visually impaired that are riding our buses would not know when their stop would be and therefore this is an assistance to them. We've added, made sure that we've maintained all our public address systems. The drivers now wear aircraft-type headsets, which allow hands-free operation. And we have identified key intersections where these stops are made. All our buses now are handicap accessible. Those include buses that kneel for those people that have difficulty climbing stairs. And our new buses are now what they call low floor, which have no steps to access at all. Basically, they, they're pretty, let's see, how should I describe it? They're even with the curb. And so it's just an easy, it's easy to board these buses. We have been looking at a number of other areas that we've actually, actually budgeted for, we budgeted $20,000 this year to, we were hoping to be able to piggyback on Shelley's request for a grant. There was some local match money that was needed. And so last year, when we, when we submitted our budget, we requested $20,000 for that purpose. And so we, we have a, you know, very proactive stance. Do you have any questions about any of those dozen and a half areas that we're been focusing on? Oh, sure. I think I kinda just touched on that lightly, but what we've, what we have done is we did fund the inventory for the sidewalk- fund the inventory for the sidewalk review along the transit routes. Unfortunately, we can't use some of the money for construction dollars either, because there are some dollars out there that we've actually have latched onto in the past, and we bought some used buses with those to kind of move our compliance a little bit ahead of time in terms of getting every, all the buses on all the routes. Let's see, some of the other things we've done is down at our transit center, we've had some requests from some of the citizens that ride our system, that their, the batteries on their wheelchairs were weak when they boarded the buses and had concerns, so we made accessible power outlets out there. We've added speaker mechanisms on our transit center information booth to help convey messages back and forth through the glass. That helps those people that have hearing difficulties. We've added, oh gosh, let's see, a new cutout. Our bathrooms were inaccessible from the standpoint that you had to go clear to the end of the block on the sidewalk and then over. There was no cutout there, and so we went ahead and just recently did a cut-in into the restroom facility. So we're always looking. We do have a Citizens Advisory Committee that's comprised of a number of individuals that meet every quarter, and they give us a lot of input on different things. Another area that is being installed and we're developing right now is a handicap-accessible water fountain down at the transit center in addition to a nine-one-one call box system. We had an individual that had a seizure down there, and there was no way to notify EMS, and so, again, we found that that was a weakness, and we're building upon that.
Thank you, Gary. Appreciate it very much. Any questions for Gary?
All right.
I do appreciate your response to the citizens. Cheryl?
I'm Cheryl Smith, interim Human Resources Manager, and I'm here to discuss briefly with you, we could spend many, many hours, talking about the application of the ADA to the employment aspect to the workplace. But in general terms, ADA has touches almost every element of what we do in the employment context, from recruitment to hiring, to pay considerations, to accommodations for individuals with disabilities or health issues, to benefits, and to all various aspects of, excuse me, our employment situation. We deal with individuals on a case-by-case basis. Most recently, as an illustration, we have an employee with a very serious health condition, and right now, we're exploring whether there may be other jobs in the city workforce that this individual could transition to. In addition to that, we're exploring with him elements of the disability pension system from the Department of Retirement Systems, to disability insurance, to all sorts of different elements in order to meet our obligations as an employer. I don't know what other questions you might have. I understand you received a comprehensive packet, and I'd be happy to answer questions.
Are there any questions for Cheryl as regards to this? Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's been wonderful. It says Dave Zabel, but you look like Bill Cook.
I know Dave Zabel, I'm not. Just, and not to try to do the complete closing here, but just, I would like to take a moment to get back to the issue of enforcement, because I think there were a lot of the concerns raised this morning. And I'd like to say, I think everyone you heard from this morning sincerely is concerned, I know I am professionally, the issue of the American Disabilities Act has been in our mind as public administrators all of our careers. And I think we sincerely are concerned that the city do the best job possible to assure that that act is enforced in our community. Having said that, I think you also realize that we are resource-challenged as a community and as an organization, and therefore, I think the challenge is to think smart. We have three code inspectors for a city of eighty-two thousand, and we have three building inspectors. We are experiencing a huge growth spurt, if you will. We had almost a hundred million dollars of construction valuation last year. And the council has set other priorities, you know, the enforcement of the vacant building ordinance in terms of the boarding up of our vacant buildings and making sure that we take care of our neighborhoods. Graffiti is obviously on the top of the list. The council has approved a permit guarantee program, so we are on a tight timeline in terms of reviewing new construction that comes in. But that, again, is not to say that this is not an important issue as well. I heard several suggestions this morning, just as a reminder that the time that it would take to research, and using the Gateway as an example, if I might, Mayor, that project was built before the federal ADA law, but after the state's ADA law. So we would have to know what was in play at that time, what was required of them at the time they were built, what was the building code at the time they were built, what did they, what were they required for buildings, parking spaces, as opposed to what did they actually build? Because I don't think any of you would want us to go out and start a citation on someone, for example, without having the facts and knowing exactly what the issues were. And I don't think that's where we want to start, anyway. I think, I heard Councilmember Johnson and also Macaulay say, you know, it's an educational issue here. Can we not get the word out to the business community that this is an important act and these requirements are important? Micah mentioned the idea of sending letters. It turns out that we do renew business licenses every year, and so every business has a requirement to come back through our system to have that license update. This would be an excellent opportunity for us to put some kind of a notice into that...
Friendly notice.
Friendly notice, explaining that this is important, that it serves the people of our community, and it's good for their customers. Exactly. I think the work that the police department is doing is great. Now, there may be a coordination opportunity there as well with the signage issue, but...
Is there any way that the business owner could have some kind of documentation that, for example, if there was a complaint, and you're investigating the complaint, and you could just call the business owner and say, "Do you have documentation, blah, blah, blah?" So you don't have to go through all this research. They've already got it in writing that they have something they can hang on their wall or something, that in a quick phone call, it could be cleared up without having to do all this research on when the building was built, what laws were infected that time. If they had a sheet of paper signed off by the city that said, "This is in compliance as of blah, blah, blah," and then that building owner could tell you, "Yes, I have this, and it's certificate number whatever, you can look it up," you say, "Okay, verify that," and case closed. You wouldn't have to spend an enormous amount of time doing the research.
But you would the one time, that's all I'm saying. And we could perhaps help people do that. If they were interested, just like your occupancy limit for your space inside your building going to the fire code, if someone wanted to take a little bit of time and help us, I imagine we could show them the process or guide them through that route. But then, when they make changes to their building, or if they re-subdivide, or if they're in a larger shopping center, those add later complications. But I like the thinking, so that someone would know exactly what their requirements are. And we're here to help. I'm just saying, it has to flow within the other workflow, that's all I'm saying. We can handle these on a case-by-case basis, but it's much more difficult to take everyone or many people and move them over to another assignment.
I can see where easily the casual observer driving by different businesses can say, "They're not in compliance, they're not doing this right, they're not doing that right." And the reasons for it may be very valid, and so there's an education process involved there, too, I guess, with the public in general.
Right. I do appreciate the response of the city staff and all of the departments. Again, I believe that Mike has spurred this, Hummel, and I would like to open the audience participation time. Bill, thank you. Jeff, thank you. Mike, I'm going to give you the first seat. We've got about ten minutes to accomplish this, and our study session will be completed. Any others that would like to speak as a part of audience participation, if you prepare yourselves to do so?
Is that aisle wide enough?
Yeah, I'm banging everything.
Maybe to paint new stripes down there.
Yeah, I need the stripes.
Okay. If you'd identify yourself, please. And Mike, would you pull that microphone in front of you?
My name's Mike Hummel. I reside at nine thirteen South Fourth Avenue. And yes, there has been a lot done since, or one way or the other, since I first brought this up in regards to the Stewart Avenue and Stewart incident. I have heard mentioned earlier about, actually, a question brought up, whether or not, whether the businesses can be ticketed. Yes, they can. There's a double side from, I don't know if it got covered or if it's been researched or not, from what I understand, there's a double side to the ticketing process. Yes, the person that's parked there for not, with validated permits can be ticketed, but also the business can be ticketed for not having the correct signage to validate the parking. And it is the signage that actually validates the parking. It's not the painted thing on the ground. That doesn't really mean dilly squat, to clarify that. How much they are fined, I'm not sure. I have heard that it's a hundred and twenty-five. I don't know. I can't state for sure exactly what their fine would be. I have also asked the question, or brought to the attention of council, and it's in the packet, is that any city that employs fifty or more persons must have an ADA coordinator. I've asked this question at a recent council meeting. Who is the ADA coordinator for Yakima?
That question was answered, and Dick, I had asked that, too, behind the scenes, and trying to think of who they told me it was. I thought it was Cheryl, but...
It could be a choice of a few people. It could be Mr. Maples.
Yeah, Cheryl's...
Okay, it's Cheryl.
And I have a question on that. Is that an ADA coordinator for the city or the building?
Yes, city, I believe.
Okay. Mike, continue, please.
It was also brought up about, because I brought up Stewart Avenue and Stewart. Well, when I did that, there was three reasons that I'd give council for fixing that particular corner. They were, at that point in time, a gentleman falling off of his shop rider, three-wheel vehicle. Knowing was that there's an apartment complex that has nothing but seniors and/or disabled people in it. And the third was that there's a bus route, bus stop approximately fifty feet from the corner. Since then, this year, another person, according to Brent's owner, Brent Small Engine Repair, another person has fallen over on that exact same corner in a wheelchair. Now, if this continues, I'm sorry to say, one of these people, if they catch wind, can bring a lawsuit against this city. This city, I don't think, can handle that type of a magnitude of force to be dealt with under this situation. Personally, I feel that that's a very hazardous corner, and it's one that needs to be resolved. I'm sure it's not the only one, because I think there's one other one there at Sixteenth and Tight, bus stop there, on the southwest corner. That's another one. That's not, same situation, same type of curb cut. And I think there's a bus stop there also. A few of these particular ones are really hazardous, and they need to be resolved. Also, I've asked council, what type of tourists are we wanting? Are we wanting the physically able tourists, or are we wanting all tourists? And how do we expect to cater to tourists when we can't even cater to our own citizens? And personally, I think that last one says a lot, and hopefully, it will have an impact on maybe resolving some of these problems.
Thank you, Mike.
Because this goes for, not just this city, this goes for every city across the nation.
Okay, my name is Carolyn Riley, and I live on Fourth Avenue here in Yakima. I am, as you can tell, a disabled person, and I find it, I have... I have, I find it really very difficult when I go shopping, because either the space, there is not a space available, or it's not accessible by the way that I need to use it, which is, I have a ramp, because I cannot afford to have a lift put in, I don't have the funds. And so I have a ramp, and none of the spaces available that I go to are really designed for using a ramp, but that's the only way I can do it. So I'm usually way out in the middle of the parking lot. So just the fact that there is the parking spaces available is not always the answer. But the more there are, the more, and I believe this, the more handicap people will get out if they know they have a place where they can park and go into whatever business or office or anything, if they know they have that access. And without the parking, that's the number-one thing. You know, if you can't get into a building, that's a little different. But if you can't park, there's no way that you can get into that business or anything. To me, parking is the number-one thing, and should be for this city.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Were there any questions?
I have a question on that. They mentioned the legal requirements of the van, accessible spaces. Are those legal requirements adequate?
No.
So even the legal requirements really aren't adequate?
No, they're not.
Not only the not the number, but even the width by itself isn't enough for a ramp only?
No.
And so that's a bigger issue, that's a big issue.
In fact, Mike has applied to the Washington State Building Codes to have it amended to make some wider for that.
Good. I appreciate you doing that.
I presented all for you.
Yes, thank you.
So that helps.
So even though the business may well be in compliance by the national and state standards now, those standards really don't work?
For me, they do for others, but not for me.
Thank you.
For an example, if I might, there's a new business on Nob Hill, which is asking to really, really, yeah. Their disabled parking and access aisle is larger than what is actually clarified in the guidelines. And that particular business with the parking space larger and the access aisle larger, it makes it compatible to work. She would be able to go out and do business with that particular business. But not all businesses will do that. They will just meet the minimum guideline, and that's the reason why I have proposed the Washington State Building Code Council changes, which is the first meeting April twenty-sixth with TAG, Technical Assistance Group.
Good to go, Mike. Good, Mike. I appreciate you doing that.
And that to be the first of many that I plan on putting before, not only the Washington State Building Code Council, but also legislation to change things that need to be changed to make things better for these people.
Great. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank both of you. Any other citizens that would like to comment?
I guess, hi.
Okay, please come to the platform and get before Mike and identify yourself.
I'm Steffi Coleman. I work for the Washington State Department of Services for the Blind, and Joan invited me to come here today to speak to you, and I will literally take a couple of minutes because our time is almost up, anyway. I would like to just keep in mind that we have a variety of disabled citizens in Yakima. So we have people that use wheelchairs and other ambulatory mobility devices. And we also have a fairly large community of visually impaired and blind people. And I cannot tell you right now, I talked to the Yakima Valley Council for the Blind, which is a local advocacy group of issues in town where we have ADA issues, but we definitely have a huge amount of areas where visually impaired people do not have access to. And I think one of the things that I see the most is that we have sidewalks along our major streets, let's say Sixteenth, Nob Hill, some of you, that are only on one side of the street, but not on the other. And so if you live on the wrong side of the street, you don't go anywhere. And it would, if we could, and as a long project... And it would, if we could, and as a long project, work on having sidewalks, at least on those major streets, on both sides of the street, it would also help reduce the amount of dollar right services that need to be done, because, for instance, I live on the north side of Lincoln. There's no sidewalk on the north side of Lincoln. If I became blind tomorrow or visually impaired to go anywhere, I wouldn't be able to get to the bus stop, because there was no sidewalk along Lincoln to walk to the bus stop that is actually there. So that's something I would like the city to consider, too.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
I noticed you came with Bill. I haven't seen Bill in about 11 years, but you came to our school, and you taught us how to weave baskets and make pottery, and we loved having Bill there. And it was just a memory that stuck with me. So I still have my basket and my little pots I made with Bill a long time ago. It had a good impact on my life and all our students. So I wanted to thank you, Bill, for, it's good to see you again.
Well, hey, now I know if you take a class from me, you might be a city governor.
Well, I'm going to close this study session. I'm going to close by summing up just briefly what I feel like are important things for the citizens to know, and that is that as a result of Mike's hard work in bringing this to our attention, monies have been spent, monies have been applied for. We are trying to tell the story to the citizens of Yakima that we are resource challenged, that our codes departments are stressed and overworked. Wonderfully, part of the problem is that Yakima is transitioning, building wonderful things are taking place in our community. And again, I want to communicate that accessibility to all of our citizens is important to this council. I think that what our police academy is doing and hoping to do to make sure that those that need access will have access. I do greatly appreciate the recommendations that have been given from the public at the close of this session, and the recommendations that are coming forth with regards to business licensing and communicating to our citizens that this is a priority for this council, are important byproducts of this study session. Again, Mike, I want to thank you for all of your hard work in this regard, and let you know that we support you as you hope to change things for the better, again, for this particular group of citizens. With that said, we have some other business that we want to do this morning as a part of this study session. Norm, you have a piece of business that you want to...
Yes, the other day, we, the motion was on the floor for the alternative financing of the fourth ballpark at Kiwanis Park. I would like to move that we reconsider our vote at the last meeting.
I second that.
Norm has moved, Bill has seconded, that we reconsider the alternative funding for the ballpark at Kiwanis. Any discussion?
Is that to be decided now, or at the next?
No discussion is necessary, so it is open. That's, I guess, what needs to be added, so. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Why, are we voting on his motion to reconsider?
Motion to reconsider. We're voting on his motion to reconsider. It's just a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes seven-zero.
Your honor, I would like to move that we approve the alternative financing plan that the city manager brought forth for us for the construction of the fourth ballpark at the Gateway Sports Complex as described in the agenda statement from the last meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Norm, seconded by Bill, that what he said is what we will do. Debbie, you can, at some point, read that, read that back to us, but yeah, let's discuss this. I think we all know what we're doing here, correct?
Yes.
Debbie, do you need Debbie to reread that?
Not at this point.
Okay.
Anyway, I would like, I've asked that this be brought up. I appreciate your move to reconsider. Also, the fact that Mr. Lover has joined me in the motion to approve the fourth ballpark at Kiwanis Park. Again, I would like to harken back to our last meeting. I think we did, we did create a considerable amount of consternation in the community, not necessarily intended, but the question was at the time, was the financing of Yakima Avenue. As you know, let's see, Councilman Bonlander and Councilman Lover and I met the other day, and I, and the city manager Zace came up with what I felt was a very good plan to finish Yakima Avenue from Ninth Street to Seventh Avenue. And with that in mind, that was the reason why I did ask the council last meeting to table it until today, but obviously I didn't get that point across too well. So anyway, that's all I have to say. I would encourage you to vote for the fourth ballpark at Kiwanis Park.
Discussion.
I would just say that, just to clarify, that this is not linked in any way to the downtown development. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct.
The financing.
The financing.
Financing package is separate from downtown.
Right, so we, the downtown development is another subject for another thing.
We will be coming back.
And we're talking about, right, we're talking about ball fields here.
That's right.
That we, that's what the original vote was on also, and so the connection to the downtown is like connecting Walmart to it, you know? I mean, there's no connection.
Not quite. I think at the time, my question was not concerning that, quite that spaced-out of a statement. It was the point that I wanted to be sure that we had the money and it was available to do both projects, because I look at them as equally important.
Then you are linking them together, then.
Well, just for the purpose of knowing that financing was available for both.
Okay, more comment?
Well, I'm linking them. That's part of the gateway entry, and it will link with the downtown improvements. And that's partially why I'm convinced that I changed my mind. The experts and professionals have also convinced me that they need the fourth field to be competitive. So I will redirect my interest and concerns into the Gateway Complex becoming successful and self-supporting.
Okay, more comment?
I, I too am going, excuse me, I too am going to vote in favor of the fourth ball field, too. And I do feel that the explanations are very important in this issue, because I did vote against them on the Tuesday night meeting. And the challenge that this brings before us as a council and as a community is that we all are trying to be the best managers we can of the citizens' finances and the citizens' money. And my thinking on Tuesday night was I was troubled separating the community park aspect from the economic development aspect of this proposal. And when I look at three-quarters of a million dollars being spent on one park for one ball field, and I think with my community park hat on, I say, this is too much to invest in one park, because you could invest this park money in so many other places and really improve the parks for our community. But then when you put on the economic development aspect of our job also, and I, like Bill, spoke with professionals in this field of tournament management, and they say, in order to attract tournaments for the economic development that we were seeking in this community, and which was the reason we built these, the three fields originally, then the economic development aspect becomes very important to make our initial investment work. And there were other issues involved with losing the $350,000 from the state. There were other issues involved with the budget going from a estimation of $550,000 to three-quarters of a million. So there were serious issues with this, and I do not feel uncomfortable having voted no originally, but being able to have Mr. Johnson bring this back, I appreciate that very much. I would have done the same. But to look at this as an economic engine, then I will change my vote for the economic aspects of this to make the facility work for economic development.
And you know, I think, too, in all fairness to all of us, we are all new. Two years hardly makes us seasoned veterans.
We are seasoned veterans.
It's my turn. A lot, a lot of these agreements on ball parks and downtown development were made a long time before any of us came to be seated at this table. And maybe in the future, if we have these agreements that are gone on before, they just need to be refreshed for our memory. Thank you.
You're welcome, Susan.
Two years is maybe still a short timer compared to the long haul. But if you've been following, following city issues for any length of time, plus, you know, reading your material, reading the comprehensive plan information that we get, that was in there. And saying that originally, when they did the three ball fields, we had so much money to do that. We wanted to do the whole thing. It needed to be an A1 project. We didn't have enough money to do all four of them, so we wanted to do. The council at that time and Parks Commission, the people who were on those committees, said, let's do as much as possible. So we were lucky to get three top-notch fields out of that. So $750,000 to finish that complex down there is a drop in the bucket to what it's going to do to our community. And that's been around for quite a while, and it's been information that is there if you're looking and digging.
You have youth on your side, Mrs. Whitman. Us older folks need to be reminded of that.
I read in my material.
Micah?
Well, it's funny, when they talked about the whole project, they said, give us one field, do it right. Give us two fields, do it right. Give us three fields, do it right. Give us four fields, you know, do it right. And I'm all for doing a project right. I'm not for overbid projects. And I'm wondering, I'm going to be watching those invoices as they come in and saying, who's making money off this deal? I think it's a great thing. The thing about, Bill talked about it, is economic growth. And I sat there and said, I used to play baseball as a kid, and we need to grow our economy. And these tournaments are something that, as friends of mine pointed out to me, we don't always go down and see at the sundown what's going on. And we don't always go out to the complex and see how many folks are playing and who's doing what in our city. And then I had a friend of mine at the hotel and motel call me up and say, where are you coming from on this? And I said, well, here's the situation. The state grant wasn't there. We're $200,000 overbid, and we got to come up in a tight budget with $550,000 after we took out a park bond. So that's where I'm coming from. And they said, well, think about the money it's going to bring in. So I'm going to vote for the future. I'm not much into John Kerry and flip-flopping, but I think it's good that we reconsider. I'm open to ideas. And Norm, and I think this council is, is not going to just do something and shut it down, and if it's a good idea, that we're going to talk about it later. And I voted five to two to table that, to do more research, so. Thanks for bringing it back up, Norm.
Okay, I'd like to...
I'm glad you brought up the comprehensive plan, Susan, because...
Sorry.
No, I want you to know that we have not approved that yet. I plan on introducing some accountability features that go straight to the Gateway Complex, and I hope you guys are acceptable to that.
I would like to just briefly say that I appreciate the citizens of Yakima, because I know that several of you received phone calls and encouragement and education from the citizens. And to me, it's a wonderful piece of this puzzle in that you had questions and informed people, made sure that you had the answers. So I'd like to thank the citizens for being heard on this particular subject. I also want to thank you for reconsidering this as a part of the Sports Commission. We are greatly committed to seeing sports be an economic engine, and this will facilitate that, so thank you. Could I have the resolution read?
It's an ordinance, the first reading of the ordinance.
First reading of the ordinance. Thank you.
Excuse me a second.
Don't we have to approve the motion first?
You have to act on the motion.
Okay, I don't have the...
Mrs. Sanders, the last thing. We approve the financing.
To approve the alternative financing plan that was recommended, you need to have that question called for on the vote.
Okay. So we have a motion from Norm, seconded by Bill, that we, let me see this so I can read it correctly. I don't have this in front of me.
I'm not sure.
A motion to approve the alternative financing plan regarding the construction of the fourth ball field at the Gateway Sports Complex as described in the agenda statement. That's the motion. Roll call, please.
Colley?
Aye.
Edler?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lover?
Yes.
McFlure?
Yes.
Whitman?
Aye.
Bonlander?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes seven-zero. Now, the second part of this is to read the appropriate ordinance by title only at this meeting. At the second meeting, we will pass the ordinance. So could we have the ordinance read, please?
Yes, this is the first reading of an ordinance amending the 2006 budget for the city of Yakima and making an appropriation within the 331 Parks and Recreation Capital Fund, supported by a transfer from the 342 Public Works Trust Construction Fund for expenditure during 2006 to provide for construction of a fourth ball field at the Gateway Sports Complex.
Thank you. Do we have another piece of business on our agenda this morning? No. And this item is consideration of a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute and submit grant applications to the Washington State Community Economic Revitalization Board, Jobs Development Fund for the following projects, the Gateway Loop and the Downtown Futures Initiative Phase Three. Who's going to speak?
Let me start, Mayor, if I could. Bill Cook, Department of Community and Economic Development. Growing our local economy is a great segue for this item as well. As you, as you know, from the agenda item, we have two pieces on here that are time-sensitive concerning a grant application. I want to thank the Economic Development Committee for their work. They've met twice on these projects. And then I'd like to ask Michael Morales, who's done the heavy lifting on this project, to explain what we're applying for.
Good morning, Mayor. Members of council, Michael Morales, Department of Community and Economic Development. We have an opportunity to apply for a new fund at the state level, and we've briefed the Economic Development Committee, as Bill mentioned earlier, on these projects. And looking at the criteria that they are evaluating projects on, one, being ready to proceed, and then secondly, on your job creation, and actually, job creation is the highest priority. We initially put in some placeholders back in December, because we had 30 days to tell them what kind of projects they wanted to apply for, and that was before a number of you came on, new to the council and committees weren't set yet. So with two of the projects, one is the Downtown Futures Initiative. We're calling it Phase Three in this application. That's the connectors back to the core area, the Second and Third Street between A and Walnut, and A Street Parkway, Natchez, and Fourth Street, to continue with the same theme we have downtown, finish the job in the core area where we do have more north-south activity and pedestrian traffic and festivals and whatnot that take place throughout the year. We are going to use the Phase One State Capital Budget Grant and Transportation Grant as our match. And we didn't know we were going to have the additional federal money at that time. Although you probably could have asked for more money back in December. But based on the snapshot back then, we based what we were asking for on how much match we had in hand. We didn't know we'd have two and a half million more, and we can't increase that amount. Otherwise, we'd be asking for about four million. Yeah, exactly. So we're looking at 2.36 million there, and that would complete the project for us in the core downtown area. And I think the other thing to note is that Senator DCO and the rest of our delegation can still be involved in helping us in this process. This list that they will come up with this year has to go back to the legislature for funding in the next session. So if we're on the list, it has to be affirmed by then. If we're not on the list, they have the latitude to make things happen on that list as well, so we'll be continuing to do that. The second project is very exciting. We talk a lot about it in Washington DC, and it seemed to have a lot of attraction. It's a little more difficult because of its readiness to proceed and some of the issues involved with the ownership there. But it is the, we're calling the Gateway Loop Sawmill Redevelopment Project. Most of you have seen this map already. We're, and at the end, at the edge of a very exciting time here in this valley. This is going to be, I think in our estimation, the most significant development since they put the interstate through this region. This is an area that defines the Yakima Valley as you drive in, and it has for years. And it's been very good to us, but as you know, the natural resource-based economic engines are in decline. And in this case, we've already lost the sawmill in last year, and they're moving toward demolition. The plywood plant down here is continuing to operate as long as it's viable for them as an industry. But everybody needs to begin to plan for what's going to happen with the property, and not wait for things to happen to us and then scramble and try to react and put the wrong thing in the wrong... and put the wrong thing in the wrong place at the wrong time. And we're working very closely with the property owners on their plans. They're very sensitive to the workforce issues, and they are very sensitive to making sure that as long as this is viable, they want to maintain it. But we're going to look at a Phase One, $5 million application that would allow us to do the internal connection, um, coming up from Ninth Street, um, and, and Tenth, actually, through the gateway area, cutting across their property and connecting up here where we have the house value job, um, creation activities. We know that although Trail Wagon's, um, is currently vacant, and we know that the other businesses there are as well, they're going to sell. Their, those properties are going to turn over. We see things happening with the Ace Distribution Center. You saw that story. It was bought and, and we were aware of that for several months that that was in, in process. These other properties are just as attractive, and they're going to be replaced with similar-type industries. And, um, in planning for that, you're, you're going to look at bigger transportation needs and, uh, bigger utility needs to make this happen. So our application would be to get that road punched through and provide the sewer and water trunk lines that are needed to develop to the east from there. And, uh, if we can, if we can get that, um, and that would be a, a tough, uh, challenge for us, but if we can get that, that would be a first $5 million investment, um, from the city's end of the states and into the project, and look at leveraging another $10 million at least in other investments. This will be millions and millions of dollars when it's said and done. We're going to go to tax increment financing. We're going to go to the EPA. We're going to go to the Economic Development Administration, um, and with the private property owners who are very willing, uh, to work with us, and are putting a lot of work in themselves. So we're excited about the project. Um, it, it's got a, a little longer road to hoe, but, but we're going to keep it out there in front and let people understand that we are committed to making this transition successful.
Thank you, Michael. Any questions?
I would just add that it would be great if you could just, that orange line of your Ninth Street thing, where it reaches house values, if you could just make a little bit of a left turn there on Our Street and, and have that included in there to link to First Street to kind of really complete that loop. I mean, that could even be done at a later date, but I mean.
That's the plan.
That's the plan.
Signalization at First and R and, and all those things, and, and talking with DOT about how we change the, the interchange access to the property, how we incorporate, plan for the greenway and bring the river closer to the community and connect, um, under the interstate that way. There's just a whole world of possibilities. It's just a great canvas to work with, and, um, it's a, it's a generational opportunity.
Thank you, Michael. Again, any more questions? Do we have the resolution read? There are two to be read, but, uh, the first one, please.
The first one is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute and submit a grant application not to exceed $5 million to the Washington State Community Economic Revitalization Board Jobs Development Fund for Gateway Loop Yakima Sawmill Redevelopment Project.
Move for adoption?
Second.
Moved by Neil, seconded by Ron. Any more discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Edler?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lover?
Yes.
McLaurin?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Bonlander?
Aye.
Collie?
Aye. Resolution passes seven zero. We have the second resolution read, please.
The second resolution is authorizing the city manager to execute and submit a grant application in an amount not to exceed $2,360,000 the Washington State Community Economic Revitalization Board Jobs Development Fund for the Yakima Downtown Futures Initiative Phase Three Core Area Connectors.
Move for adoption?
Second.
Moved by Neil, seconded by Ron. Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor? I mean, excuse me, roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lover?
Aye.
McLaurin?
Yes.
Whitman?
Aye.
Bonlander?
Aye.
Collie?
Aye.
Edler?
Yes. Resolution passes seven zero. This is good work. It's going to be fun.
Yeah.
I like the canvas idea. That was, we did.
Thank you.
Like to spin those words.
Make sure to write that down.
Next on the agi, uh, agenda items today, 4B, a resolution authorizing the city manager at, to execute and submit a job, a joint grant application with the City of Union Gap as lead applicant for $1,960,000 to the Washington State Community Economic Revitalization Board Jobs Development Fund for the Long Fiber Road Improvement Project. Who's going to speak to this?
Continue with that. Uh, one of the opportunities that we were presented back in December during pre-application was to do a joint application with the City of Union Gap and, um, for this segment of Long Fiber Road. And as, as you know, there's some development happening toward the Valium Boulevard and Long Fiber Road intersection that will impact, um, the roadway in our city limits and, uh, won't, won't have any impact on, um, the businesses we have along that roadway in terms of, are currently needing to make changes, but when that happens, that they will have some needs as well. And so, um, once again, using other people's money, Union Gap has some other grants that they've secured to make those improvements to Long Fiber Road up to that point, and their intersection improvements at Valium Boulevard. So, um, the approach was, well, let's use all that as match and get our stuff taken care of, uh, while they're making these changes. Initially, we were going to be lead and they were co because most of the improvements are in the city of Yakima. Um, as we found more out about the project, um, and we also, um, determined that our priorities and our higher priorities were going to be for creating jobs in the city of Yakima, we asked that they take over as the lead applicant and apply, make the improvements on our side of the roadway, and we would be a co-applicant, and that's why we have to, uh, make that resolution first of all.
Now, I appreciate the City of Union Gap's willingness to, to do that and partner with us and that. It's, uh, wonderful. The Council for Economic Development, that committee recommends the approval. So could I have this resolution read?
I just have one quick question. Have we had time yet to check out that boundary?
Yes, council member, um, we have done the research on, uh, on the petition. This is, this would be a boundary adjustment as opposed to an annexation. Um, I have left contacts. I've not been able to talk with both, uh, property owners and, uh, explain what we were trying to do there. This would be to adjust the boundary line to follow Long Fiber, which makes more sense, allows them, uh, greater access and ease of development for their properties.
Thank you. Any more questions? I apologize for not asking, Mary. Okay, can we have the resolution read, please?
This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute and submit a joint grant application for the City of Union Gap as lead applicant for $1,960,000 to the Washington State Community Economic Revitalization Board Jobs Development Fund for the Long Fiber Road Improvement Project.
That's a move.
Second.
Micah moves. Ron seconds. Any more discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Lover?
Aye.
McLaurin?
Yes.
Whitman?
Aye.
Bonlander?
Aye.
Collie?
Aye.
Edler?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes. Resolution passes seven zero. Our city manager.
Mr. Mayor, I have one other item of, uh, business, and, uh, I just wanted to bring this out because I think if all of you have seen the morning paper, um, or perhaps not known that, but, uh, one of our community's foremost leaders, Mary Skinner, has been stricken with cancer. And, uh, the article is in the paper about that. She called me yesterday evening and, uh, shared that news with me, wanted me to communicate that to you this morning, that, uh, she's facing. As we all know, the challenge of anyone's life when you're faced with such a threatening, life-threatening illness. She wanted to say that she would be issuing a press statement this morning. She wanted to communicate to, through me, to you, her deepest appreciation for your thoughts and, and prayers with her as she moves forward in this, uh, effort to, uh, battle and beat that, uh, disease. Uh, I know that she cares very deeply about Yakima and this community has worked tirelessly to accomplish many things on our behalf, uh, including what we just achieved in this last legislative session with the next phase of funding for downtown Yakima. I think she's a courageous woman and a person of great, uh, honor and integrity who has given her life to this community and now must focus on her own life, uh, which is at risk. And, uh, still, she's thinking about Yakima. She couldn't help herself. She wants you to know she doesn't want to let people down and doesn't want to let down the community from, uh, the work that she's been elected to do. And it's her intention to continue serving and continue, uh, the message that, uh, she was asked to take forward to Olympia on our behalf and, and beyond that. But, uh, she appreciates all that, uh, we have done for her, and I just wanted to say that. It's really us now thinking and, and praying for her as she moves forward in this effort to, uh, to beat this disease. So I wanted to share that with you. It's from her heart, from mine as well. We wish her the very, very best and, uh, keep her in your thoughts and prayers this week and beyond.
I would like to encourage those that pray in the city of Yakima to be praying for our representative. Uh, Norm, you have.
Yes, on that same line, I had written myself a note. I think it would be appropriate as a city council, if we sent Mary a letter of appreciation and Godspeed to, uh, to a good, healthy recovery, I'd like to see us do that. I'd also like to see us, uh, send a letter to former Mayor Puccinelli, who's in the hospital undergoing some, some pretty rigid surgeries and has some other problems along with that. And, uh, so anyway, if we could in the form of a motion to both Mrs. Skinner and to Mayor, uh, former Mayor Puccinelli, that we send them both a letter, hoping that for Godspeed and a, and a total recovery from their, from their illnesses. I would so move.
Second. Okay, the move by Norm, seconded by Micah, that we communicate our thoughts and prayers to these particular individuals. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The other thing is, I don't know, did we all receive a letter from John Putney?
I did, yeah.
Yes.
Uh, concerning, uh, the pedestrian mall on Third. I'd like to see us refer this, uh, letter and request to the appropriate, uh, downtown committees for their, uh, purview and, and, uh, recommendations.
Okay.
Do we need to put that in the motion, Bill?
That'd be fine. It, just consensus. We're, we're looking into it. A consensus of the council is fine on that.
Okay.
Anything else? And I would move for adjournment to April 4th, uh, 2006, at 11:30 AM at the Yakima Convention Center. This is an executive session regarding pending and prospective litigation. Allow, allow approximately two hours.
Okay. Second?
Second.
You had a Neil, Michael. Micah seconded that we adjourn to April 4th. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We're done, sir. We still have a public safety meeting this morning here?
Yes, there's still public safety with Susan and Ron and Mike.